For December 6, 2010. This evening, we are pleased to have with us Pastor Edward Petrika of the Seventh Day Adventist Church that will give us our invocation, and that will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise, Pastor.
Our gracious Father in Heaven, we thank you so much for life, for health, for family, for the beauty of snow, the whiteness of snow that reminds us of your love and grace. Thank you so much for the beauty of your character, for how beautiful you are, how loving you are. We're ecstatic, we're joyous, we're happy to worship such a beautiful God. Tonight, we're asking your presence to be with us, to inspire us, to give us discernment as we work through various projects, bring honesty to the table as we work together as brothers and sisters in faith, as community leaders who want to work together to make this city of Troy stronger, to add values to people's lives. Bless us with your presence, and thank you so much for calling us to work together as a family. We're confident that you're going to answer our prayer because you know even the fall of a sparrow, and you'll answer the pleadings of our hearts. We're asking all these things humbly and faithfully, in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Pastor. Mrs. Bartholomew, we have the roll call.
Mayor Schilling?
Here.
Councilmember Beltramini?
Here.
Lemming?
Here.
Howrleak?
Here.
Kirwin?
Here.
McGuinness?
Here.
Slater?
Here.
Quorum present. This evening, we begin with a very special occasion, and that is a presentation honoring Judge Michael A. Martone, and he is here this evening with his family, and this was a surprise for him, but a well-deserved surprise and honor. I'm going to go down to the front for the presentation, and Michael, when you come up, would you also bring your family with you? If you'll stand over here with your family around you, then the audience can see you, and I think you're going to like this. We know you're going to like it. You okay?
Danger for two.
I'm also going to invite up Captain Tim Akins from the Oakland County Sheriff's Department because after I finish, he has something to say and present to you too, so we're going to be surround—well, that's what—when he first came in, that's what we thought they were after me. Whereas Michael M. Martone was first elected to Troy in Claussen's 52nd-4 District Court in 1992, and re-elected without opposition in 1998, and again in 2004, he received his Bachelor of Arts degree from Wayne State University, and his Juris Doctorate from Michigan State University, Detroit College of Law, and whereas the community has been in constant change over the years, but Judge Martone has maintained a distinguished record of accomplishment, judicial integrity, character, service, and excellence to all that he has served. Judge Martone's professional career and much of his personal time has been dedicated to helping America's youth avoid problems and deal successfully with the challenges that they face in today's society. His frequent use of creative sentences and his establishment of the Courageous Decisions Program, a nationally acclaimed alcohol intervention program, has raised awareness of the dangers of drinking and driving and underage binge drinking all across America. Since its inception in 1993, more than 225,000 students in 30 states have participated in the highly successful, award-winning program, and whereas on April 20, 1999, in its first-of-its-kind broadcast, Judge Martone presented this program via satellite to every school in North America. Judge Martone is a faculty member at the Michigan Judicial Institute, and served as both lead faculty and as a special presenter at the National Judicial College in the University of Nevada, where his program has been established as part of the college curriculum. It's also part of SAD's National 2000 by 2000 Initiative, and both the 1997 and the 2000 MAD National Youth Summits, and whereas Judge Martone and the Courageous Decisions Program have been featured on NBC's Today Show, ABC's Good Morning America, CBS Early Show, MSNBC's Today's People, CNN's Newsstand, and on National Public Radio's The Todd Mundon Show, and that's quite a list there.
[laughing].
In 2008, Mothers Against Drunk Driving Southeast Michigan created the annual Courage First Lifesavers Award, named in honor of Judge Martone's Courage First Program, and presented him with the inaugural award, and whereas Judge Martone has been the recipient of the Harvard University, John F. Kennedy School of Government, 100 Most Innovative Programs in all of federal, state, and local and tribal government award for his Courageous Decisions Program, and whereas over the years, Judge Martone has volunteered with Troy Families for Safe Homes, Troy Community Coalition for the Prevention of Drug and Alcohol Abuse, and the Troy Foundation for Educational Excellence. In 2006, Judge Martone was selected as the Distinguished Citizen of the Year, and an Oakland County Q2 Award winner. He's also been a soccer and basketball coach, youth mentor at St. Thomas More, and active with the Boy Scouts of America. Another impressive list. Whereas the most important aspects of Judge Martone's life is his family, his wife of 32 years, Martha Rose, and sons Jonathan and James, who are so proud to be here with you tonight, as always, whereas Judge Michael Martone is respected nationwide, not merely for the justice that characterizes his courtroom, but for the ways in which he works to keep our community safe and our kids on the right path. Judge Martone's innovative crime and substance abuse prevention programs have attracted national media attention and have been adopted by courts and schools all over the United States, but we are so proud to call you our own. Now therefore be it known that the City Council of the City of Troy takes the opportunity to express its appreciation and sincere gratitude to Judge Michael A. Martone for his many contributions for the betterment of the city during his tenure as 52nd-4 District Court Judge. Be it further known that the City Council of the City of Troy, on behalf of themselves, city management, and the citizens of the City of Troy, extend wishes of prosperity, good health, and happiness to Michael during his retirement years. His influence and contributions will remain alive in our hearts, and will impact each of us as we journey into the future. This is presented this sixth day of December 2010, and of course, signed by myself, all the members of council with great affection and respect. My pleasure to introduce Captain Tim Akins of the Oakland County Sheriff's Department. Would like to make a presentation.
Judge, on behalf of Sheriff Bouchard and entire Oakland County Sheriff's Office, we'd like to thank you for your many years of service, and please accept this certification, a certificate of appreciation that says, "It is with great respect and appreciation that this certificate is presented to Judge Michael Martone. His years of dedicated service to our community, and especially to children, will leave a lasting impact." Sir, thank you very much for your service. On behalf of Sheriff Bouchard, thank you.
I know that you didn't come prepared with anything, because of course, you didn't know, but never at a loss for words. I'm sure you can find something you'd like to say.
Well, as I look around this room— As I look around this room, I see a lot of my friends, and you are my friends. It's been my honor to serve you, and whichever endeavor I undertook was for the citizens of this great city in Claussen, but to be recognized and honored by you tonight is overwhelming. It was easy to do a good job because I had such good people around me, the Police Department, the Sheriff's Department, council, the mayors, Audrey, the schools made it easy to try and help. I get the recognition because I haven't put my name on it, but I couldn't have done it without the schools, I couldn't have done it without you folks. I'm still from the bottom of my heart, and Lee, what can I say? Thank you all so very, very much. I'll never forget this night.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Well, I indicated we were going to begin with something very special, and of course, the recognition of Judge Michael Martone is truly something we're very pleased to do, and certainly well-earned, as you heard by his accomplishments. We appreciate all the things that he has done, and it was so nice to see so many people come on his behalf tonight. This evening, we do have some regular business, and we're going to begin with some public hearings, and the first one is a public hearing for the establishment of an IDD, Industrial Development District, for Silk Route Global LLC at 950 Stevenson, and our city assessor, Nino Lecary, will present for staff.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. I have to tell you, this is the second time in my career that I've had to follow Judge Martone, and I'm getting really tired of it. I'm glad he retired finally. We have two public hearo—actually, four public hearings for two different tax abatements tonight. The first one is for Silk Route Global, and as you're aware, as to past practice, we would present everything when we create the district. If you do not wish to grant the abatement, there's no reason to create a district for the abatement. Silk Route Global, both of these companies actually are not making major investments in Troy, but they are bringing in a huge number of jobs to the city. Silk Route Global is going to add 40 jobs to the 13 existing jobs that they have, you know, threefold increase in their staff. They're moving into 950 Stevenson. The principal of Silk Route Global has an interest in the building also. They're going to buy some computer equipment valued at about $200,000, based on the criteria set by council on their tax abatement policy. They'll qualify for six years of abatements under our current policy. Over the six-year life of the abatement, their estimated total tax is about $3,000, of which about $914 would be city taxes, so their savings are going to be about $1,454, and the cost to the city would be $457, which is also the amount of taxes that we'll collect that we are not collecting at this point in time. They've met all the requirements of Public Act 198, the Tax Abatement Act, IFT Act, and they do meet all the requirements of council policy as it has been set and amended two times by the council, and with that, I could answer any questions you might have.
Are there questions, Mr. Lecary, from council at this point? Seeing none, then I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone here on this item that would like to speak?
We do have representatives from both companies here. My apologies.
Okay, thank you. Anyone that would like to speak on this matter? How are you? Nice to see you.
Ted Wilson with Core Partners Commercial Real Estate. We represented Silk Route Global in obtaining a mega grant from the state, which was a neighbor of $680,000, and is going to allow them to expand way beyond the numbers that we presented to you right now, and their company is an international company that we should be very proud of to have here in the city of Troy, and I think you'll find that their growth over the years will be significant, and we appreciate the help that the city's given us in making a contribution toward maintaining them here in the city of Troy.
Thank you, and we appreciate you helping companies also, Ted. Thank you. Anyone else that wants to speak? If not, I'll close the public hearing, return it to the council table for a resolution.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Councilman Beltramini?
Resolve that the Troy City Council hereby establishes an Industrial Development District, IDD, for property known as 950 Stevenson, Troy, Michigan, 48083-1172, parcel number 88-20-35-126-018, in accordance with City Council Policy Resolution 2010-08-173, and be it further resolved that the Troy City Clerk shall forward a copy of this resolution to the State Tax Commission, Treasury Building, PO Box 30471, Lansing, Michigan, 48909-7971. Support.
Moved by Councilwoman Beltramini, seconded by Mayor Protem Kirwin, that we approve the resolution as printed and read. Discussion?
Mayor.
Councilman Howrleak?
Consistent with my opposition to tax abatements on the principle that all businesses should be treated very similarly and equally, and governments should not be in the game of picking and choosing winners, whether that be through local tax abatements or through the Michigan Economic Growth Authority, I will be voting on this resolution as well as the next three resolutions.
Thank you. Anyone else? The vote then, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltramini?
Yes.
Lemming?
Yes.
Howrleak?
No.
Kirwin?
Yes.
McGuinness?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Motion passes. The next public hearing is the granting of the Industrial Facilities Exemption Certificate for Silk Route Global LLC at 950 Stevenson, and Mr. Lecary, do you have anything else to add? Okay, I'll open the public hearing. Anyone that would like to speak on this item? Seeing none, close the public hearing, return it to the council table for a resolution.
Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Beltramini?
I would move the resolution to grant the Industrial Facilities Exemption Certificate as written. Support it.
Moved by Councilwoman Beltramini, seconded by Councilwoman McGuinness, that we approve the resolution as printed for the Industrial Facilities Exemption Certificate. Discussion?
Madam Mayor.
Yes. Mayor Protem Kirwin?
I think it's wonderful that we see the surge in jobs in this fight, and also that 950 Stevenson is now full, so these are two really nice things that are happening. Great economic development, and that is a direction that we want to go, and a message that we want to strongly send, that we're open for business and that we're ready.
Thank you. Anyone else? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilmember Beltramini?
Yes.
Lemming?
Yes.
Howrleak?
No.
Kirwin?
Yes.
McGuinness?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes. Motion passes. Our next item is a public hearing for the establishment of an Industrial Development District for P3 North America Incorporated at 1957 Crooks, and Mr. Lecary will present for staff.
Thank you again, Madam Mayor, members of council. P3 North America is expanding into 1957 Crooks. It's a multi-tenant building, and I should have mentioned that on the previous one, that is also a multi-tenant building, so establishing a district for both of these properties allows other companies to come into that building without having to have a district established for them. P3 also has incentives from Mega. They're looking for tax abatement. Their purchases for equipment and improvements at this point in time are about $146,000. However, they are going to add 23 new jobs to the 44 jobs that they already have in the city of Troy, so their investment of $146,000, unfortunately, they only qualify for two years of the tax abatement, so their total taxes would be about $3,573, of which 1,123 of that would be city taxes, so their savings would be one-half of that, or $1,790 on the total tax bill, and $562 on the city taxes. They also meet all the requirements of Public Act 198 and the City Council Resolutions as printed, and also, Mr. Beggin is here from the company, if you have any questions for him. Another good move for the city here, and I should point out again, I forgot to do that for the first one, Mrs. Valenteck works very hard on these through the manager's office and Mr. Miller's office, so quite a bit of thanks is due to her on these. Thank you.
Counsel, did you have any questions for Mr. Lecary? Okay, if not, I'll open the public hearing. Anyone here that wishes to speak on this matter? If not, I'll close the public hearing, return it to the council table for a resolution.
Madam Mayor.
Mayor Protem Kirwin?
Resolve that Troy City Council hereby establishes an Industrial District, Development District, IDD, for property known as 1957 Crooks, Troy, Michigan, 48084, parcel number 88-20-29-426-042, in accordance with City Council Policy Resolution Number 2010-08-173, and be it further resolved that the city clerk shall forward a copy of this resolution to the State Tax Commission, Treasury Building, PO Box 30471, Lansing, Michigan, 488909-7971.
Support.
Moved by Mayor Protem Kirwin, seconded by Councilman Fleming, that we approve the resolution as printed and read. Discussion? And please, this is coming forward, for those of you that watch us regularly, you've heard Mayor Protem Kirwin and I talk about when we visited the company for their opening, and how they had two of their clients speak about the company and the kinds of things that they do, and the way that they were able to help them, and quite impressive companies, by the way, and so we were very pleased. This is a company that started with three employees, but actually, P3 is a company in Germany, and then they've opened the company here, P3 North America, but the kinds of things that are appropriate, especially with emergent sectors, things that we're trying to encourage, not only in Troy, but in other areas, so we're pleased that this is here. Mrs. Bartholomew, the vote?
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Howrleak?
No.
Kirwin?
Yes.
McGuinness?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltramini?
Yes.
Motion passes, and our next public hearing is the granting of the Industrial Facilities Exemption Certificate for P3 North America Incorporated at 1957 Crooks, Suite B. Anything to add? Okay, Mr. MacCary, thank you. I'll open the public hearing. Anyone wanting to speak on this item? If not, close the public hearing and return it to the council table for a resolution.
Madam Mayor.
Mayor Protem Kirwin?
I'll move the resolution as printed, public hearing, excuse me, for the granting of an Industrial Facilities Exemption Certificate, IFEC, for P3 North America Incorporated at 1957 Crooks, Suite B. Support.
Moved by Mayor Protem Kirwin, seconded by Councilwoman McGuinness, that we approve the resolution as printed. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilmember Howrleak?
No.
Kirwin?
Yes.
McGuinness?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilwoman Beltramini?
Yes.
Lemming?
Yes.
Motion passes. Good luck to both of these companies, and thanks to all the folks that assisted them, both at the city and other companies that are encouraging businesses to come and expand in Troy. Next, we go to the section which is public comment. If there's anyone in the audience that wishes to speak that did not sign up, we ask that you do so. We're at the number almost four, almost 15. I think we're two off. Let's see, two, four, five, yes, we have 13 people. So with that, we'll begin with the usual five minutes, and this can be on items that are on the agenda, items that are not on the agenda, and it is a five-minute time span, and we ask that, of course, people give their name and the matter that they wish to speak on. We'll begin with Janice Daniels.
Good evening. Madam Mayor, council, staff, management. My name is Janice Daniels, and I moved into Troy 11 years ago so that I could give my son the best environment with which to grow up in that my money could possibly buy. I wanted to share a picture of my son with you. This is Mark Daniels. He's a private in the U.S. Marine Corps, and so he chose the military path to be the best that he could be by fighting for our country. So sometimes, when I come to you speaking about fighting— So sometimes when I come to you speaking about fighting for our library, it seems difficult to put this into perspective, but I actually think that this library issue has far greater implications to our community, if not our nation. It speaks of the need for government transparency. It shows the coercive tactics that are being used against the citizenry, and it exposes possible abuse of power. Because quite frankly, there are only four people who used our library as a political pawn to try to force the taxpayers to vote a tax increase upon themselves. Those four people who voted to shut down our library are you Mayor Schilling, and council persons Kerwin, Slater, and McGinnis. Now, Troy Citizens United has come before you with a multitude of ideas and plans to save our library. One of the suggestions was that there be an across-the-board 5% pay reduction for all city government employees. Instead, you offered us furlough days, and you hide behind contracts, and you fire entry-level persons, and you mask increases in your budget by saying you're consolidating services. But I'm not here to go over all those recommendations that we've made that you've ignored, because I'm concerned about your most recent tactics to stall this issue, possibly in an effort to continue to market the library's closure in an effort to increase the public's anxiety over this issue. Are you doing this so that once again you can bring a tax increase proposal to the people in the year 2011, thinking that maybe you've beaten us down enough to where we're going to vote a tax increase upon ourselves in a time of great uncertainty in our country? Where will this end? So now we have a brave citizen named Mr. Ed Kempen, who looked at this abuse of power and tried his best to provide the citizens with an option to maintain our city's control over our public library with no new taxes. And now, our well-compensated city attorney is bringing a lawsuit against Mr. Kempen so that the city management can avoid honoring our charter's directives and once again thwart the will of the people and stall for time. And now it appears as though you're prepared to decline the will of the brave Troy citizen taxpayers who want to keep the library open without adding another layer of bureaucracy and without raising our taxes. And the four of you now seem ready to cost us yet another $90,000 in an unnecessary special election, rather than simply adopting the petition and accepting the responsibility of revising the budget to include the funding for our public library. If you four council members do force this to yet another special election, I have a feeling that 90% of the citizens are going to vote, yes, we want to keep our library with no new taxes. That is what we told you in February. That is what we told you in November, and that is what we are telling you now. So you must know that the responsibility is upon you four council members. We really only need one of you to come to your senses, vote with us to save the library with no new taxes. Don't take the easy way out. Be the best you can be. Do it for our children. Do it for Mark. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Nancy Gross.
Good evening.
Good evening. Hello again. My name is Nancy Gross. I would like to thank Mr. Zerlag, Councilman Slater, and Councilwoman McGinnis for taking the time to answer the questions I asked at the November 22 council meeting. Ms. McGinnis was kind enough to send a letter, and with her permission, I'm going to share a portion of that. It is important that her answer be made public and available to all who are listening to this. The previous council had given city management direction last fall before the November election, that in light of the huge economic shortfall that was projected, council believed that public safety and maintaining infrastructure should be given priority over other city services, services that included quality-of-life venues. The current council and management sat through hours of budget discussions, both before and after the February Millage election, and tried to map out a plan to tackle the revenue shortfall that was resulting from the plummeting property values and building vacancies across the city. Even though the library has become the polarizing issue in the community, the plan approved by the majority of the council was much more comprehensive than just closing the library. The budget was approved based on concrete expense reductions that have already been made within several of the city departments, and the fact that we believe the community wanted to maintain acceptable levels of police and fire protection and infrastructure maintenance as long as possible, assuming there were no revenue increases. The budget still calls for massive cuts in these departments as well. They just occur later in the rolling budget. The city is still moving forward on all of the strategies the council supported to streamline the entire operation, including privatization, consolidation of departments, cooperation with other municipalities, wage concessions, reductions in healthcare costs, and overall evaluation of the organizational structure. Unfortunately, these things cannot occur overnight, and the budget we approved had to be based on known expenses and revenues at the time we were required to approve the budget. It was not an easy task to accept the reality of where we would find ourselves with such a reduced level of revenues, and at times, I think we did not want to accept the three-year budget in the hopes that things would magically turn around before those times were upon us. In reality, adopting that budget document was the right thing to do so we can see what we are dealing with, and make a plan to get where we need to be to survive and prosper as a city when the economic times change. The three-year budget is a rolling budget. That we will look at several times each year and discuss the progress made, and at times, the projections that were too forgiving. Much like what has happened with the museum and the nature center and the community center, where we can increase revenue or create a new way to deliver service, I think council is going to be supportive of whatever we can do to keep the things that we love as Troy's citizens. I am hopeful that all of the difficult decisions that we have had to make over the last year will sustain us and bring us through these tough times to be a leaner and more efficient city in the end. Thank you, Ms. McGinnis. I would still like to hear from the other council members. Mr. Howrillak, I would particularly like your viewpoints on how much money you believe will be available from those sources that you outlined in your response to Mr. Slater, so that I can have a better understanding of both sides of the issue. I am sure that you believe the money is there, but from what I have been hearing, Troy's budget is stretched almost to the snapping point. To that point, I would also like to express my opinion. I do not know any of the council members personally, so anything that I say is based solely on the actions of those council members, not them personally. It was stated at the last council meeting that the library belongs as an essential item in the budget, and there are some who obviously agree with this. In an article in the Troy Times, after Proposal 1 was defeated, Mr. Howrillak was quoted as saying that he felt, in spite of the vote, the people of Troy did want a library. And later, he indicated he would be accepting of a half a mil increase on the taxes to this purpose. If this is so, then why was there such an opposition to Proposal 1? If the purpose of this opposition was to make a point about where the library fits in the scheme of the budget items, this was a disastrous time to take such a stand. It may be that the library would be better off as an essential item. I don't know. But certainly, the point should not be argued at the very expense of the library itself.
Mrs. Gross, that's your five minutes. I'm sorry.
Okay, that's okay. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Scott Walker.
Hello, everyone. Thanks for your time. I appreciate it. My introduction to government was yourselves, and I am now the aide to William Jefferson Clinton, the former President of the United States. What I am addressing about quickly is I had a second event at my home at my front door with a police officer off duty wanting to physically fight with me. I was arrested eventually for indecent exposure by the same two officers that responded to this event of physical violence. Their names unimportant, second event. What happens beyond closed doors to eventually rectify the police department, I do appreciate that, and am going to need it again. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is John Burt.
Good evening.
Good evening. How are you all tonight? I wanted to just ask a couple of questions, rather pointed ones, and I don't like doing this because it was really a fairly positive meeting with the judge and honoring him and everything. But I look at the city that's supposedly going broke, and I see a great deal of money being spent, and I'm not against the museum, but I'd like to remind you all that we're not Gettysburg. And it's open from 10 to 3, three days a week, and we're paying a great deal of money to keep it open three days a week to the supervisor over there. And what are we getting for it? I mean, most of the people can't go between 10 and 3. They're at work. Why, at least, aren't we opening it up on Saturdays and giving people a chance to go to that? If the museum is really an important part of the cultural well-being of this city, let's make it work. 10 to 3 doesn't work for anybody with schoolchildren. And you're paying an awful lot of money. Has she done anything? Has she found any other resources? Has she?
Well, we have our response at the end of the call.
Okay, okay. I'm seeing shaking heads. And the other question, well, the reason I'm bringing that up is because I keep looking, and I wanted to congratulate the council, the police chief, and everyone, because we are, you know, here we got all the kudos for being the safest city in Michigan. And we're going to lay off a great deal of our police officers, and I know what's happening in Royal Oak right now. They've laid off police officers, and there's a great many break-ins occurring all of a sudden over there. And I'm sure some of you must be aware of this. It's happening. So I'm just, that was the whole reason I brought that point up. If I can save one police officer, I want to save one police officer. I brought this up at the last meeting. I want police officers saved. And the other question I have again is for Mr. Fleming and Mr. Howrillak. They both said vote no, and they must have a plan for the Millages, and yet I've yet to hear anything other than the fact that we're paying the city manager. Last time, I heard a lot of, well, we're paying the city manager too much money and that, and that was the whole reason the city was going broke, from what I could tell from what, and I don't think that that plan meant that, but that's what it sounded like. So I would really like to hear the plan from those two gentlemen. And other than that, thank you.
Our next speaker is Marvin Reinhardt. Good evening, Mr. Reinhardt.
Thank you, Mayor, for letting me talk tonight, and fellow council people. I'll just let you know how safe this city is. My windows got broken out, and it's so common occurrence in the city, it doesn't make the newspapers. Do not leave anything on your seats anywhere in Troy, or your windows will get broke out, according to the underworld in Troy, because they're broke in the city of Troy. They're starving. Second of all, I'd like the people to try to locate our blogs in the city. We have the Truth in Troy blog, which is sometimes up, sometimes down. The guy seems to cry a lot. Then we got the David and, Dave and Mary blog. They seem to be pretty neutral. They put maybe 50% of my comments on. Truth in Troy deleted 95%. Dave and Mary deletes 50%. And I'm just saying that because they know how I truly feel, and how I truly feel how Troy became Troy. Now, if you guys don't want to believe it, you guys want to keep rolling up the no vote. There's not many of us left in Troy, old Troy, but we're enough to keep the election on the no side, because when we used to go in Troy High School, the police used to date our dates when they had us in their car. That's how the Troy police used to treat us back in the 1960s and '70s. Okay? Keep Strong Troy deletes about 95% of my comments. So I'm just letting you know, I do comment a lot. And as far as Martin goes, he's asked a lot of questions. He asked for the DDA's line item budget. I haven't seen it. Those guys have unlimited amount of money, DDA, and don't tell me they're limited. I know how much gross they make. I know how much comes out of Somerset. They got two or three million-dollar events every year they collect there, not for one charity in the city of Troy now. Bouchard does not collect money in the city of Troy except for his stuff. Dave Bing came down and collected a million dollars right at the Marriott two weeks ago. So when Keep Strong, Keep Strong Troy says Detroitites are greedy, I think it's 957 Stevenson's greedy. I think it's 1957, whatever they are asking for taxes. How much tax is it going to save in how many years? Two grand? I put that much up my nose in a weekend sometimes, two grand. And you guys are sitting there acting like 40 grand for the nature center is a lot of money. Well, how can that be a lot of money when the police department lost 40,000? It's not a crime. So this city, yeah, Judge Mattel, you guys should kiss his ass, because if I was a judge, I would audit this city, because there's a lot of you people living off this city. And I keep telling the people on these blogs who I think's living off the city and who they can bribe, because as my email address is City of Troy, Michigan, a lot of people think I'm the city. And I tell them I'm not the city. I'm just somebody that watches the city, and I know who you can bribe. And I give them names. So when those names associate with those companies, I figure they're bribing you. So you have a good day, Mayor, and as far as that K2A goes on this solar house, I called up that Lawrence Tech. They said the city already bought the house. You guys already own the house. And if they don't own the house, I'm going to be back at the president LTU and tell them to get that piece of property off of ours, because that is a hazard. So you guys have a good day. And that's for Ms. Hodges. Ms. Hodges said she collected $200,000 in the name of the chamber for that house before she donated it here. That's on the record, and you was there, Slater. Have a good day, ma'am, and have a happy year.
Our next speaker is Gordon Chepke.
Mayor, council. I've been up here quite a few different times, trying to talk to the council. There's a lot of people on this council I disagree with, and there's a lot of people on this, well, there's some on the council I agree with. That doesn't make it right, or doesn't make you good or bad, just because I don't disagree with you. This is the United States of America, and I love it, and I think we all have a right to have our opinion. There's just something that's not right with this library issue. I don't like it, and I think I'm not the only one. We don't like, we don't like the library board, because it's another layer of bureaucracy. And whether I come down here to the council meetings or watch them on TV, I never cease to wonder about some of the comments that I hear from different council members up here, and some of the things that I pick up on the hidden agendas. I'm real upset with the four people on this council that seem to be blocking any other route to financing and keeping our library viable, and not wanting to discuss these issues. And these are things that we should be working together on, the council and the citizens. We shouldn't be sitting tearing at each other's throats all the time. You know, I think Troy is kind of like a microcosm of Washington, and in this last election, the people in Washington that refused to be accountable were shown who runs the show. And hopefully, as they're sitting out on their ear out of office, they'll have some time to think about some of the things that they did, which were totally against the will of the people. And I wish that the people on the Troy City Council would realize that they represent people, and they're put up here to be fiduciary, have a fiduciary responsibility, and to be caring to the citizens of Troy, and not to be tyrants. On the original seal of the United States of America, Benjamin Franklin wanted to put in their oppression to tyrants is oppression, tyrants is obedience to God. And we want councilmen up here that are going to work for the betterment of the citizens of Troy and not tyrants. And, you know, I was going to read this darn thing, but I'm not going to read it. I just want to tell you to do your job responsibly, and consider all, you know, there are ways to save our library. It is part of the infrastructure of this city. Sure, it's not police protection, but it's a necessary part, and I'm sure there's a way to keep it. And I wish that John Zerlag doesn't run, tells this council what to do. This council tells John what to do. He works for you. You don't work for him. And sometimes, it seems to be the other way around, and that really cheeses me off. So I applaud those members who try to get a vote brought out so that there are different ways can be discussed to keep the library open, and the- ways can be discussed to keep the library open, and the four who are blocking, I say shame on you.
Our next speaker is Mr. Peters, Richard Peters. Good evening, Mr. Peters. Good evening.
Mr. Damon?
Good evening.
Oh, good evening. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm, you know, nice and cheerful. Um, right off the top of the head, I was wondering about Beaumont, I mean, yeah, Beaumont, that parking lot up there. I keep seeing that, and I talked to the manager not too long ago, and he said that they were only going to be there for six months. It seems like it's a little bit longer than that, that they've been there, and we were kind of wondering how long they are going to be there. That park, I think, was specifically set up for kids and people, and the amount of wear that they put on there, and the amount of money they're taking in, believe me, I know, you know, they, I think they can probably afford to maybe put another thing on their parking structure up there or something. One other thing, too, I listened a few weeks ago, I believe Ms. Daniels was talking about 6,000 to 8,000 for an attorney in Oakland County, as opposed to Mrs. Bloom's salary. Now, regardless of the issue, 6,000 to 8,000 seemed a bit of a stretch to me, maybe an ambulance chaser, you know, with an IQ of a, you know, but I find that pretty hard to believe, and plus the quality of the attorney that you have compared to others, I thought was a bit much. Okay, I might, I also wanted to talk a little bit about a tax and trade proposal. Now, we all know taxes are in the news lately, and I thought that in exchange for the Schumer Plan, that they should maybe have a 10% reduction in the gas tax and a 1% increase on the Internet, just as a throw-up or one dollar thing. And finally, about terrorism. Al Qaeda was a religious sect that came out of Saudi Arabia, and they were primarily brought Abu Aziz, who was the first founding father of Saudi Arabia. Now, our country classifies Al Qaeda as a terrorist organization, when in fact, they're a religious sect. That seems to me kind of like declaring that all Southern Baptists are Klansmen, and all Italian are mafiosos. I would hope that our country takes a better view of these things, and, now, maybe I'm naive in this area, but that's all I wanted to say for tonight. Thank you very much.
Next, we have Gerard Staker.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and members of council. I've come to talk about the library and to bring up two issues. And the first is regarding the Friends of the Troy Public Library, which I am a member of, and which is a 501(c)(3) charitable organization. That means if you donate money to the Friends of the Troy Public Library, you get a charitable deduction on your tax return, but in exchange, you have to follow certain rules, and one is that you are sharply limited in your political activity. You can never donate for or against candidates, and a ballot proposition would be considered lobbying under one of the Treasury regulations that governs Code Section 501(c)(3). You can't give more than 5% of your expenditures, generally speaking, and not more than 20% if you make a bright-line election. The Friends recently had expenditures of about 99,000. If they were to give 5,000, they would violate one rule, 20,000, another rule. But if you look at the 15,000 plus the five pieces of literature they mailed, plus another piece, it seems pretty clear they spent over $30,000, and there's a strong indication that they violated the federal tax laws. They need to open their books and explain how much money they spent versus their expenditures, and if they have violated the federal tax laws, and if so, will they be faced only with penalty taxes, or could they lose their tax-exempt status? We need to have a private organization to support the library. We need to know if the Friends can do it. We can't have a 501(c)(3) charity finance public political campaigns. They can state a position, but they can't be heavily involved. The Obama administration has made it a priority to crack down on 501(c)(3) charities that are heavily involved in politics. We need to make sure that the Friends of the Troy Public Library are not one of them. Second, the city of Troy is filing a lawsuit with Attorney Lori Bloom against circulators of the petition to keep the library open for at least 55 hours and allow the city council flexibility on financing. I ask that the council persons who have voted to close the library, that would be you, Mayor Schilling, Councilman Slater, Councilwoman McGinnis, that you reconsider your position, and also Councilwoman Mary Kerwin. You voted to close the library. We have brought up many ways that you can save money. Some have been considered, most have not. I ask that you please reconsider your position, Councilman Slater, Councilwoman McGinnis, Mayor Schilling, and Councilwoman Kerwin. On the other hand, I'd like to thank Councilwoman Beltramini for voting to keep the library open, and to consider different options to keep the library open and be flexible about it. And I'd also like to thank Councilman Wade Fleming and Councilman Martin Horelick for their position. It would be a shame to take a petition that was signed by 2,560 people and take it off the ballot, and to use our taxpayer money to finance a lawsuit that's in effect against us, the taxpayers. The ballot proposals that went on the ballot, all four of them, only needed 50 signatures. The 2,560 signatures gathered for this petition are over 51 times that. It's a good plan. It clearly reflects what the people of Troy want. The people Troy keep bringing up, we want the library open. People who are in favor of tax increases wanted it open. People who oppose tax increases wanted it open. People want to create a brand-new library authority without any agreement in place as to how to handle the real estate, want the library open. People who are opposed to that plan want the library open. We want the library open. So Councilwoman Kerwin, Councilman Slater, Mayor Schilling, Councilwoman McGinnis, please reconsider your position, and Councilwoman Beltramini, Councilman Fleming, and Councilman Horelick, please keep up your good efforts to keep the library open. Madam Mayor and members of council, I thank you for your time.
Next, we're going to hear from Kim Yan Shishin. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Kim Yan Shishin, and I am speaking today also about the library. Seems like that's our main topic, and I believe Troy should have a quality library. However, I do not support the Kempin approach to get there. As I walked and called my neighbors in support of Proposal 1, I was asked more than once, if this passes, what will prevent some other group from getting together to raise the millage, to support some other city service? Isn't this just going to keep going on and on and on? And I explained to them that Proposal 1 was set up under a specific Michigan law that applied only to libraries, that we, it wasn't something that you could use for any city service, that it was strictly a library law. However, the Kempin approach does not have that kind of safety catch. The Kempin approach asks the Troy City Council to accept a proposal that was signed by less than 5% of the voters in this city, and deem it the will of the people, and so now I have that question. If the city council accepts this proposal and allows it to proceed without any sort of election by the voters, and I realize that there's a cost to that, but that's part of the process, then what is it to prevent another petition, and another petition, and another petition, and another petition, for whatever some group of 2,000 citizens in the city decide they want the city to spend their money on? We have elected you as our city council to determine what the budget should be for this city, and we should not set a precedent that a small group of citizens can put together a little petition and bring it forward, and that you will accept, yes, we'll mandate a piece of the budget for whatever it is that purposes that they decide that they think we should have. Don't make the mistake of assuming that everyone that supported Proposal 1 supports this petition, just because it involves having a library in the city of Troy. I support your action to get a ruling on what would the meaning and what would the impact of this petition be, before you make any decisions about how to move forward with respect to it. Thank you.
Next, we'll hear from Ed Kempin.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I just came here to make a few key points. I'm not sure if you're aware of all of the activities of the city attorney and what she has filed?
Kempin, please, talk in the mic so the people behind can hear too. Yeah, thank you.
Okay. It's my opinion that we really don't need another special election here in this city. We've had special elections in the past. It is also my opinion that we do need a library, and that's obvious, that the vast majority of the public here and out on the streets is in support of that, having a library. There are varying opinions on what the scope, the scale of the library services should be, but it's almost, I'd guess, 90% in the community, that library services is an expectation of our public and should be provided. The petition that we circulated has been circulating since September, so it's been out there for quite a while. Right now, it seems as if the city may be using stall tactics or delays in processing the signatures through the city clerk's office, in delivering them to the city council, and it's finally being delivered tonight, and also in trying to not only meet the requirements of the charter, which is 30-day response, but to further extend, part of Lori Bloom's request is to violate our city charter and request that the judge extend that beyond that. This is part of the hearing that was requested ex parte, so basically an absence of any arguments from our side. I think that this, everybody up here, I believe, has taken their oath of office to make sure that we do abide by the city charter, that some of our requirements here, well, some of the things that she's looking at are, may be complicated in terms of how we execute things in terms of the city charter, but I don't think it deems a direct violation of what our city charter is about, and I just want to make you aware of it. And if it does require another meeting in December to meet our 30-day timeframe, I think it would be worthwhile, and I would like to see the votes of the members here on council, and I would also like to see this brought forward and the library funded any way possible.
Next, we'll hear from Tom, oh, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to cut you off.
And one last comment is, as Lori stated out, there is no clear case law on this, so it could drag out for some time well beyond the closure of the library, so I hope that it doesn't go that way. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, we'll hear from Tom Krant.
Good evening, council. At the last council meeting, I focused in on Martin, our Councilman Horelick's letter to voters, and in that letter, he stated, "If any of the four proposals are successful, the new library district would need to obtain a facility for the library and purchase books, computers, tables, chairs, et cetera. Property owners will thus end up paying twice for one library." I simply asked, is this a statement that we can trust? His response, in his response to the public comments, he said, "There was a comment about my letter. I'm afraid people are reading a lot more into it than exists. I was simply trying to reiterate the ballot proposals and take a position on it." Well, that didn't really answer the core question I'm trying to get at, and that is, how did he determine that the property owners will thus end up paying twice for one library? He didn't say it could, or it maybe. He said it, he just said it will, and will means that's going to happen that way. He knows that it would take a vote of council to determine how the library building and all of its contents would be transferred from a city department to an independent library, but he didn't answer to me, and at least in a way I could understand, how he arrived, and on what factual basis did he arrive at the conclusion that council would, will, or obviously have to, charge this new library board, I guess, the amount of a new library to take over our existing library. It just, it just didn't sit right with me, and especially when he knew that our city attorney, Lori Gregg Bloom, said, "I know when other communities have gone from a departmental library to an independent library, the books and the buildings have been donated." So I'm still trying to get at, how did he arrive at the idea that council would vote to double the costs of our library to the citizens? So I sent an email out to all the council members, and I got three responses, asking basically, did Councilman Horelick poll you to find out how you would vote on transferring the building and its contents to an independent library board? I got three responses, and they were all no. They were never polled, so I'm really still asking the question, how did Councilman Horelick determine that it will cost the property owners twice for one library? Thanks.
Next, we'll hear from Linda Keimer.
Good evening, Mayor and city council. Michelle Ree, former chancellor of the DC Public School System, says, "The state of America's public schools is dire. Out of 30 developed countries, the United States ranks just 23rd in reading and 25th in math. Aren't we glad we live in Troy? One of the finest cities in the nation, top schools, top library." Oh, wait a minute, that's wishful thinking. For our library will be closed next summer. Some of you say, "No, it won't close." Mayor and city council are using it as a pawn. Others say, "We don't need a fine library. We've got bookstores and the Internet." I've also heard someone say, "When I was outside the library, I saw people from other cities visiting. Charge them." If she or the others had gone inside and learned how a public library is run, they might have thought differently today. Our library is the heart of the city and critical to the education of our youth. It was said that the generation coming up will be the first one in many years that will not be smarter than their parents. What a shame, and who's to blame? We've heard people blame the council members that voted for the budget, having voted to close the library. No, they voted for the only option that allowed for a balanced budget with the existing funds, the option that was on the books back in September. Our current library budget is 2.7 million, and that's resulting in a 50% reduction in purchase of assets for checkout and use, with only six full-time employees, down from 13. The Troy Public Library has the lowest cost per item circulated and lowest cost per visit, with the second highest number for circulation. Seems to me the Troy Public Library sure is doing a great job so taxpayers get the most bang for their buck. Bloomfield Township has a budget almost twice ours with half the circulation, and guess what? They voted for a millage, 1.3, for their library in February. Which brings us to our budgeted money, the income revenue, the money that pays for everything. Revenue for the city is down approximately 30% or even more. Recently, a representative of the Michigan Economic Development Council estimates city revenues are down 50%. How can people look in the mirror and actually believe themselves when they say there's still money for a library? Troy has the lowest tax rate, city tax rate, in Oakland County for comparable full-service cities. Did you know Birmingham, Farmington, or even Southfield have millage rates that are more than one and a half times ours? And it's interesting to note that Rochester Hills has a tax rate close to ours, but it doesn't include trash pickup. That equals almost two mills. Two mills for trash pickup. That's more than we asked for, for the library. However, the voters didn't accept the millage that was proposed to save the library. Say what you want, but we all know that the unethical tactics, misinformation, and lies, which by the way, are continuing even in the response to public comment, are, that's the reason the people voted it down. I think those that made our numbers drop in math around the globe are those locals that think there's still money in the budget for the library. With that over and done with, we're still waiting for someone who claims to feel the library can stay open without any additional taxes or a minor .5-mill tax, to show us a very detailed plan on how to save it. I also found it interesting that Ed Kempin now claims, "We don't need a library like we have now, but the mission of the Friends of the Library with no new taxes on Facebook states, keep our library open just the way it is now." And in the November 25th Oakland Press, Lori Bloom was quoted as saying, "The petition that Mr. Kempin filed is vague and incomplete and does not provide any funding." And Mr. Kempin said, "It is important," and I quote, "It is important that we understand the implications to the city, the implications this petition would have on the budget," end quote. So don't blame council, when Mr. Kempin knew ahead of time what would happen. Now, I'd like to read you a comment from a recent blog, but I'm changing Tea Party to TCU, because I don't feel all Tea Partiers agree with the TCU. We have to start at the lowest level and take our country back. Obviously, we're already at a low level. Governments are broke, infrastructure's not being maintained, class sizes are Governments are broke, infrastructure's not being maintained, class sizes are increasing. Good teachers are leaving, libraries are closing, even cops are being laid off. If successful, Troy Citizens United will indeed take our country back, back to the early 19th century. Such short-sightedness is unfortunate. What are downright obnoxious are the TCU's convictions that they shouldn't have to contribute anything to help sustain the communities which sustain them, and nobody's worth what they're paid, except them. At root, the TCU isn't for limited government. They're just a crowd of grumbling misers, the creepy little Ebenezes or Scrooges, who always have haunted every community. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Thomas Burke.
Just two quick starting comments. It's really good to see that the bitter name callers have at least gotten over that since the election is over, but, and taking your advice, Councilman Slater, and stop the name calling. But I just, perhaps my second comment would be to answer, I don't have the right to answer for Councilman Horlak, but perhaps he got his advice on the double billing from the same place that the pro-tax crowd got when they said that it absolutely would not be double-charged. And factually, in the state of Michigan, new libraries have been given for free, and some of them have been charged, so it could go either way. I'd like to make my main comment here on our new loaf for the city of Troy, and that's the fact that the Troy council now sues its citizens in order to allow council to violate the charter that it's sworn to uphold. I think that is just, we have, when we thought we had gotten down in the depths, we get the shovel out and go another layer down. Shame on all of us. You know, beyond that, this hastily thrown-together document in and of itself is an embarrassment to all the city of Troy residents. It has so many errors in it, it is really just hard to read. I hope no one outside the city reads it. For an example, just so I do state something, paragraph 38 states, there were four, and let me repeat, four ballot proposals, and the proposals were defeated by 49 to 51%. I think we all know that is factually incorrect. The Oakland County election website shows that the four were defeated 24 to 76% by a more than 3 to 1 margin. And I say four because that's what the lawsuit says. You know, it doesn't bother to say that the pro-tax crowd spent $65,000 versus the anti-spent $7,500. You know, David beats Goliaths again. You know, my other comment on that would be, you know, the lawsuit makes a big deal out of potentially him to spend $80,000 for a special election. But a year ago, council had no problem overriding the voice of concern of many citizens to have a special election and blow 90 grand in February of 2010. So, hey, 90 grand here, 90 grand there. Why is one different from the other? But my main comment, can't we just move on? Isn't there really only two courses of action right now? We're either going to accept Ed Kempin's proposal, or you're going to close the library. And it really seems like the four anti-library members of council are just going to keep at it until they get their way and close the library. Can't we move on? Can't we stop talking about this is a library versus public safety issue? It's not. It's a library versus crony issue. This is keeping some things out. For an analogy, the Detroit Symphony Orchestra is in dire financial straits. They've asked all their employees to take a significant pay cut. They did not say, "We are going to fire all the woodwinds and give a raise to the brass." The city only works if all the departments are there. Can't we just move on? We are going to have a library. It will stay open, and it will get funded, although no one will like how any of these, our departments, get funded. For example, you want the plan, you know what the plan to cut costs are. You've got a list that flowed around Troy. I didn't put it together, the 20 top paid people. Anyone looking at that can see two or three positions that any organization in financial distress would eliminate. That's over a third of a million dollars. Why have we not taken those actions? It's because those are the cronies. Those are the top managers that no one wants to pull the strings on. It's easier to lay off a couple hundred people that make lower wages at the library and say, "Woe is us." We all know the solution in hard times, just in good times, everybody gets a raise, in bad times, everybody's got to take a hit. And when the salaries in the public sector and private sector are out of sync, put them back in. That's the plan, and until you do it, we're just going to go down this road one step at a time until further disaster.
Our next speaker is Sharon McDonald. Good evening.
Good evening. Well, I have to applaud you. It seems like you're saving money by keeping it freezing in here. Ha, ha, ha. In response to the honorable TCU leaders, I've learned a new phrase recently, and that is renewable revenue. To save our library, we need renewable revenue, revenue that we can depend on year after year. The one and only funding idea I keep hearing is how we have to cut salaries. The problem with that, particularly, I like the one of cut the pay and benefits for five workers and half to save a half million dollars. Well, that's fine for one year, but the next year, we would have to raise that $500,000 all over again. Without renewable resources, we can't have a sustainable library, and that's just a sad fact. And now here's an old phrase, "You can't get blood from a stone." In the blame game that's going on over the library, I'm going to go one step farther. In Troy, we are all to blame for the fact that our library will cease serving the public in April of 2011. In 2008, a majority of Troy voters voted to amend our city charter so that our tax rate, our millage, could not be raised by a vote of the city council, as it has, had always been. Due to that amendment's passage, any increase in city tax rate has to be approved by voters. And guess what? People don't like to raise their own tax rate, even when their taxes are going down every year. But no other city has volunteered to tie the hands of its local government this way. No other city is suffering with budget cuts because of limitations they put on themselves. This is kind of crazy. So as our taxes continue to plummet, and those Troy city revenues continue to plummet, all our city council can do to balance the budget is cut, cut, cut. Cut the nature center, cut the library, cut the museum, cut the cops. Our city is going to hell, not because of any sinister city government actions, but because the people voted yes on the charter change in '08, and they voted no on both millage elections to save our amenities. Of course, it didn't hurt that the likes of Troy Citizens United, Councilman Horlak, and a host of shadowy political operatives spread cynical disinformation campaigns to convince Troy voters to vote against their own interests, because that is what we have done. The people are to blame, too. If you keep voting to weaken your city, you're going to end up with a weak city. How simple. So will those who voted no feel proud when the library closes in April? Will that show the city council something, or will it simply hurt our community, hurt our property values, and hurt our children's opportunities to study and research in a safe environment? Troy Citizens United has been behind all of these anti-tax schemes. They pushed the tax cap amendment in 2008, and they cheated to defeat the special millage in February and the library-saving proposal won. Yet on their website, TCU dares to ask the question, "If the county of Oakland is committed to balancing its budget without a millage increase, why can't Troy do the same?" Well, the answer is that we didn't get a millage increase, so the city is balancing the budget, Troy Citizens United, and that is why our library is closing in April. Thank you.
Next, we'll hear from Stephanie Dilworth.
Hi.
Good evening.
Good evening. So I also wanted to speak about the library. First off, I just wanted to disagree with the first comment made by the first speaker, how she thought it would be a good idea to, like, cut the council pay because that would help the library. And I just disagree because I know that people suggest, like, with the president, with our big government deficit, people always say, "Oh, well, if he didn't ride, like, jet planes and stuff, we wouldn't have such a big deficit." But even if we did cut, you know, president jet planes, it really wouldn't take our country out of debt, just like cutting your pay wouldn't save our library, because it just, it wouldn't raise enough money. Also, like, I know I got a lot of phone calls, or, well, not I, but my family got a lot of phone calls, from people who said we should protest raising taxes for the library. And I understand why people don't want to raise taxes, because, like, obviously, nobody wants to lose some of their pay cut. But it's like, I found out that if the library gets cut, like, I'm going to have to go to, like, the Bloomfield Hills library if I want to check out books, most likely, because it's the closest library to my house. And going to the Bloomfield Hills library to get a library card would cost about the same as it would in a tax increase, like, by yearly. And I just think it, if I'm going to, like, give more money, if my family's going to pay more money, I would rather give it to the city of Troy rather than Bloomfield Hills because I don't live in Bloomfield Hills. And then, like, furthermore, just, I don't know if, like, these ideas would really help the library that much at all, because they're really small, but I was just thinking, a way, I know you guys have probably looked at a lot of different ways to make cuts, but just like a suggestion, maybe if the library had more volunteers. I know, like, a lot of high school students have, like, required volunteer hours and are always looking for opportunities to get those volunteer hours, and maybe they could work, like, organizing books and even acting as, like, custodians, to kind of help out in some way with the budget. And then, last, I know right now, one way we're trying to cut money is by having the library closed on Saturdays. And just like a suggestion from the perspective of, like, a high school student, it's really frustrating when you have a report due on Monday and you can't go to your library on Saturday. I'm not sure if maybe you guys could contact the library and see if there was any other days that the library wasn't as busy, like, a weekday, that you could maybe close it instead, so high school students like me could do their reports and check out books on the weekends. Yeah, thank you.
That concludes those that signed up to speak, Mr. Witt and Mrs. Zambroski. I, you know, I indicated early on, for just a moment before I come up, I indicated early on for people to sign up. We now have had 15 speakers, which means we could have limited it to three minutes. Now we're going to have 17. So after this, I'm going to insist that people sign up, or they're not going to speak.
I couldn't get it in, and I really didn't plan on speaking, except I have to come here and say, Councilman Horlak did not write in his letter the things that he, people are saying. I was the first one to speak about what it would cost for the people to pay for the books, the computers, and everything, because we know the building is owned by the city. This is parkland. We know that that would be rented out to whoever takes over the library, including the heating bills, the electric bills, the water bills, everything. And that means buying the computers, buying everything. I had said this to the director. She even gave me a price of what it would cost. Now, I don't remember it, but then I talked with Councilman Beltrameeny, and she said, "You know, we could be nice, and we could donate it." And I said, "But if the is so far in debt and everything, and there's no money," I said, "I don't believe that would ever happen. It would be a cost to the people that would run it." And that, and I'm saying, and I am on the library board, and we do not make decisions on our library board. It's the director, and her boss, and the city manager that make the directions. We hear what they say. We can make our statements, and you'll get it written up somehow in a paper, but we do not make the decisions for the library. This is not that kind of a board, like other boards, where they make the decisions and come before the council, or go before the director and say, "Hey, we want this done." We did that before. I was able to get a few things passed with Brian Stoughtonberg and that, but it was, it's too tough now, and Kathy's doing a great job as a director there. But yes, it would cost the taxpayers to have to purchase some of the books. We don't know how much, and this is the shelving, the chairs, the tables, we're talking everything in that library. Now, I can't remember what she quote, gave me a quote on, but I'm sure Mr. Lamorato would know that more than anything. But I'm sure that, yes, you could sit down and say to the people, "Hey, we're going to donate it. We're going to be a nice council member."